A presentation by Environmental Industrial Services Group, EISG, regarding optimization, expansion, and management of the Port Arthur landfill. If you'll come up at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening. You can state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Peter, and we are Environmental Industrial Services Group.
I need somebody's address.
Sorry?
Someone's address.
Oh, yes. Our address is 9900 West Park Drive, Suite 348, Houston, Texas, 77063.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You may begin.
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, city attorney, city manager, city staff, and most importantly, the people of Port Arthur. We're very honored here to present to you today our plan to optimize the Port Arthur landfill for the municipal optimization and the industrial expansion. And furthermore, we've also put together a video today to show you guys how we intend to develop the landfill and all the insight that we have to make sure that we get this done the right way.
Okay.
The Port Arthur landfill modernization: municipal optimization and industrial expansion. A public-private partnership with Environmental Industrial Services Group. Good morning, Mayor, council, city manager, city attorney, city staff, and the people of Port Arthur. We thank you for allowing us this opportunity to present. Today, Environmental Industrial Services Group, recognized as EISG, introduces a plan to modernize the city of Port Arthur landfill. Our goal is simple: to strengthen what already exists, optimizing municipal solid waste operations while expanding capacity to manage industrial waste responsibly and profitably. This isn't just about waste. It's about turning an underused city asset into a long-term economic engine. Why now? Fort Arthur sits at the heart of the Gulf Coast industrial corridor, surrounded by some of the nation's largest refineries and petrochemical complexes. Yet today, the city captures only about 12% of the regional waste market. The other 88%, roughly $60 million per year, goes to competitors. Comparable cities generate around $4 to $5 million annually in landfill revenue, despite some being no larger than Port Arthur. So, the challenge isn't location, it's infrastructure, and that's exactly what this partnership intends to fix. What changes? Upgrading, expanding, and capturing value. We will upgrade the existing MSW cell that's currently there, bringing it to modern operational standards, and add new engineered capacity for Class 1 and 2 industrial waste. We'll also improve the site itself: upgraded scalehouse, roadways, solidification pits, box washing, and leachate treatment systems. Finally, we'll establish transfer stations in surrounding counties, pulling waste that currently leaves the region back into Port Arthur. Partnership, people, and cost: a true public-private partnership. This is a public-private partnership where the city retains ownership and oversight, while EISG provides the capital, expertise, and execution. There is no city capital required for the modernization work. EISG will fund the equipment and site upgrades. All current city landfill employees will be retained, and EISG will fund training and certification programs at our own cost. The upgrades: building foundation for efficiency and compliance. Here's what modernization means in practice: optimize the existing MSW cell for better traction, safety, and daily coverage management. Add industrial capacity through a focused permit amendment to accept non-hazardous industrial waste. Install solidification pits and box washing systems, adding up to 25% more revenue per ton on complex loads. Upgrade the scalehouse and move industrial clients to tonnage-based billing for accuracy and transparency. Implement leachate treatment enhancements targeting up to $190,000 per month in savings. Introduce recycling and composting programs projected to save hundreds of thousands of dollars annually in operating costs. The phased implementation timeline: a clear roadmap, three phases of progress. Our implementation plan unfolds in three clear phases. Phase 1: foundation and compliance, months 1 to 12. We'll upgrade existing infrastructure, begin road and scalehouse improvements, and initiate the permit amendment process to include industrial waste. Phase 2: construction and expansion, months 12 to 18. We'll bring in new heavy equipment value between $15 and $20 million. Install solidification and box wash systems, and complete the construction of the industrial cells, ready for capacity intake. Phase 3: market capture and optimization, months 18 to 36. We'll activate transfer stations, expand client contracts, and bring the landfill to full operational capacity. Efficient, profitable, and fully compliant. Within 18 months, the industrial sensors are online, and visible customer-facing improvements: scalehouse, roadways, housekeeping are fully in place. Market and logistics advantage: positioned for growth. Within a 60-mile radius, there are more than 50 major waste generators. Most are currently trucking to distant sites. By introducing local transfer stations in Orange and other surrounding counties, we intercept that flow, cut haul times, and bring those revenues home. That means better rates for customers, more volume for the landfill, and new long-term revenue streams for the city of Port Arthur. Financial outcomes: turn deficits into durable growth. Here's what that growth looks like in numbers. Years 1 to 2: about $5 million annually from industrial waste, and an additional $2 to $3 million annually from municipal solid waste improvements. Years 3 to 5: approximately $20 million annually from industrial waste, and roughly $4 to $5 million annually from municipal solid waste. Tenured cumulative total: over $50 million from industrial revenue alone. 25-year projection: between $150 and $200 million combined from municipal and industrial operations. And that's in addition to substantial savings from leachate and composting improvements. Nearly $2 million a year in reduced operating costs. Community and compliance: jobs provide and long-term stewardship. Every current city landfill employee keeps their job. EISG will fund professional training to raise skills, safety, and certification levels. Because modernization means empowering people too. Residents will see tangible improvements: cleaner drainage, smoother traffic flow, upgraded equipment, and a landfill that looks and operates like a top-tier facility. Environmentally, Port Arthur will be to exceed TCEQ and EPA standards, protecting local air, soil, and water for generations. Moving forward, together, from plan to partnership, this initiative is more than an upgrade. It's a partnership in progress, following the city's authorization. As we proceed into formal contract negotiations, EISG stands ready to finalize the structure, performance standards, and revenue framework that will ensure Port Arthur receives maximum benefit with zero financial burden. Together, we can transform what was once an overlooked site into one of Port Arthur's strongest and most sustainable assets: a state-of-the-art landfill, built the city of Port Arthur.
At this point in time, thank you very much, everyone, Mayor, and all the city council members, and naturally, city manager, city attorney. We thank you for your opportunity and time. I just wanted to present a little bit of experience that I have on my end. I specifically, in this market, have worked in the hauling application for both Allied Group Public Waste, as well as GFL. I've previous to that for about a decade in this market specifically. Everything that we've just laid out with regard to the opportunities that are here in this specific market are within 15 to 20 miles from the landfill. 95% of the revenue streams, which, based on the Southeast Regional Planning Commission's information, exceed about $1 billion in revenue. And that does not include all the new growth that's coming out from the new facilities that are being built, and all the targeted municipal services are going to be around those. We would ultimately try to compete specifically against companies like Waste Management and Republic, whose landfills are at a distance away. However, they're removing all the revenue streams from here in the volume into their landfills for internalization. They're capturing that revenue. What we're essentially looking to do is more or less provide a streamlined approach for the market, go out, visit with all the large industrial chemical applications and anybody else, and target Class 1 through Class 3 waste, as well as going out and introducing ourselves to the municipal market, as well as the C and D in construction market, and bring all those waste streams home. All those waste streams today are not being captured or even looked at by the city of Port Arthur today. And, you know, not to say that it's an easy sale to go and get those things specifically, but at the end of the day, when you really look at where we are, you truly have a blessing in the asset that you have today because it's been underutilized for, you know, decades. Now, all of a sudden, your cost of disposal in this market is increasing up to $100, if not more than $100 a ton for not only basic trash, but also your special waste. And if we were able to go out and compete with those folks specifically, not independent companies, large corporations, we can guarantee that the materials that are within that 15 or 20-mile radius that we have, it's more cost-effective for your larger companies who are on your chamber would want to bring that material back because it saves them a significant amount of money. And we're not talking about in disposal. We're not looking to set the disposal rates cheaper for Port Arthur. We're talking about increasing them to match those of competitive locations. And in doing so, providing exceptional service, efficient processes, streamlined operations at the landfill, we should be able to attract a lot of small third-party companies that are operating. And in truth, if you guys really took a little time to research who's out there, there's not many people competing because Waste Management and Republic and companies like that have already pushed them out of business. So it doesn't, you know, yield a lot of opportunity for us. So, the end result is, we've identified, created, and built a plan to not only manage the landfill, improve the operational security of the landfill, present that opportunity for long-term earnings investment in the community, but we can go out and get it local, which would allow us the opportunity to hire more people, create more jobs, you know, create recycle centers for the future, smaller opportunity transfer stations, waste diversion. There's 100,000 things that we could do to make Port Arthur probably the best operating landfill, you know, within the Houston area. It's just that simple. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes, yes. Appreciate your presentation. Your turnaround time, up and operating, what kind of time we talking about? And how many jobs are we going to be producing? Estimates?
Operating time for what it takes. In the first year, I think is the most important thing that we would have to look at. Yeah, I mean, we really have to go in and do our due diligence at the existing landfill to understand what we're working with. And once we've had that done, we naturally can share that relevant information with you on a regular timeframe. And at that point in time, naturally, we'll be looking at volume and opportunity. We would have to establish ourselves in the community far before the landfill is completed so we could start that sales process in place to go out and meet with all the potential cities and larger operations, letting them know that we're going to be on the bid docket for the following year. And then, once that happens, naturally, we'll push to sell on a pre-close basis, and then we'll be able to see the volume, and then we'll know what we need from a headcount perspective.
Councilmember Dusset?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. But I'm going to need to talk layman terms. We say, private-public partnership, you know? But when we start saying that employees are going to retain jobs, and you're going to bring in equipment and stuff, basically, what we're talking about here is us contracting the landfill, as opposed to operating it. We're just going to contract and let them have it. City man, that's what we're talking about, right? We're no longer going to be operating the landfill.
That's what they're proposing in their presentation.
Well, that's why I said I'm going to talk layman terms for citizens, you know? They don't understand private-public partnership. So basically, what we're talking here is that we're going to turn over landfill operation to you all, and from your presentation, you all are going to set it up, but you are not going to just look at ours. You're going to go out for other clients within the area to bring in, okay?
Ideally speaking, when you look at a landfill, your optimum surface area for any landfill is about 30-mile, 60-mile zone. What we're talking about doing is building here in Port Arthur, setting up a building, putting operations in here long-term, supporting the community's own efforts for existing trash surface where you're going out and you're collecting, you know, what's within the franchised area. But there's a tremendous amount of work within this 20-mile zone just outside of Port Arthur that hasn't been captured.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. I basically said, when you take over it, you're going to be looking for a larger area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I said. Yeah, that's what I said. You know, you're going to be doing business running a landfill, not our landfill, but you're going to run a landfill.
Correct.
And that, all of the employees, you're going to be able to then have, because you're going to be running it, it's going to be yours. So, you know, that's the thing I want to make clear to our citizens who are listening of exactly what you all are presenting before us, okay?
Yes, sir. Just in addition there, Councilman Dusset, the permit and the property would stay with the city of Port Arthur. EISG would, we would just be the operator. We'd have the contract on.
Well, that's what I said, because when you say partnership, the only partnership I see where we are is our landfill. We got all that, but you all are going to be responsible for the operation of the landfill.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make, yeah, I just want to put it in layman terms. Thank you.
Councilmember Everfield?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I remember you all coming to executive session, sharing your initial thoughts of wanting to do business here. And initially, that conversation surrounded a portion of our landfill, which I'm open for correction, city manager and city attorney, if I misspeak, that you submitted a proposal already. You won the bid on the proposal. Where are we with that? Because this presentation you provided today goes beyond what your scope of work you've already won includes.
The proposal that we submitted included management and addition of a new landfill sale. From the RFQ, let me read out what it says. The city of Port Arthur is seeking qualified firms for a joint venture for the development, construction, management, and operation of the MSW landfill, which is the solid waste landfill that you currently have. The successful firm must demonstrate modifications that include other waste than municipal wastes applicable in existence today. So it's a combination of running both landfill sales for, given the experience, this kind of joint venture is very common here in Texas. You see the, Victoria, Waco, the rest. The way the permit is going to be set up is going to be for both commingling of both the solid waste and the industrial waste. And we're going to probably have another section for just purely industrial waste. What we submitted a previous proposal for was for the whole, for the management and operation of the landfill itself. So, and the proposal did cover that. This is from your RFQ.
So, what does the scope of work actually, I understand the paragraph that you read, but the scope of work is what y'all were awarded to do, which did not include management of our entire landfill?
Yes, it does. It does include that at initial stage. It does. If you go back and look at it, that's what we talked about in our presentation, that we were going to take over the management of both the city employees. For us to be able to facilitate the proposal itself, it has to encompass both the municipal and so, you cannot have, if it's two different permits, I can understand why you're going to separate it. All we're doing to your current permit is upgrading your current permits to allow additional and, at the same time, improve the municipal solid waste. So that's, it's, 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 it's the same RFQ that you put out that we responded to. And in that RFQ, it clearly states what I just read out to you guys.
Let me interrupt, Councilmember Everfield. I like for the, actually, the, what the RFQ, who's here? Who was handling the RFQ? Because I want to know what it went out, because I thought it was just an area of just the industrial part of the landfill that was out for big. And someone, I'm going to bring someone up. I want to see the RFQ. Yeah, it was just one segment that, from what I understood. Real quickly, y'all.
While we're waiting for that, can I just make that?
Oh, go ahead, finish up.
Okay. So, from my understanding, I understand that what you're proposing, not what we agreed to, what you're proposing seems to be much more extensive, the presentation that you provided today versus what was in the RFQ. What you provided today seems as if we own, we continue to own the land, you all manage it, earn an income, and then provide a certain percentage of that income to us. Our landfill is in the black. We're doing very well, so I would understand why you would want to be a part of this growth. But I also believe that we can have, that we can continue that growth in certain partnerships for future growth, for further growth, but not, I don't think any of us was under the impression that we would be handing over our landfill to anyone. The impression that we have from the scope of work was a specific sale.
Yes, Mayor. Okay, can we get the, Dr. Haney, come in, if you could, you, the proposal, you have that?
Yes, ma'am. We worked on the RFQ, and we put this information together. The intention of the RFQ was specifically for industrial waste, and we did mention that specifically when we had the pre-bid meeting on this project.
The pre-bid meeting?
Yes, ma'am. We had a pre-bid meeting on the RFQ, so that was the intention from the beginning for that RFQ. Not sure the expert that's been read is from which section of the RFQ, but our intention has always been to do the industrial waste, because there is a huge market for that, and city staff do not want to get involved with industrial waste. After speaking to staff and the employees that work the landfill, they don't have any desire to get involved with the industrial waste part of it.
So we did send that out, for clarity. We did send that section, from what I understood, as well as Councilmember Everfield and some of the councils here, just that section of the landfill out for bid, for RFQ, for a question proposal. And this company won that, they only had one bidder, and they won that bid. Because I, listen, I was here when our landfill had negative, and we worked hard to build that landfill back up. I was on council, Councilmember Kenlaw, and we were in the red red, and we have brought that landfill a long way. And for us to give it away at this time would be devastating to the city of Port Arthur. That's how I feel. But basically, I do understand their proposal, and when it's in the black, you know, it's a goldmine. So, but if it was industrial waste, we need to identify those areas clearly to make sure that that's what the proposal was for, and we stick with what that was for. Their presentation was amazing, but...
Yes, ma'am. I haven't seen this presentation before, so I cannot say what works, what doesn't work.
Oh, no, I just needed you to clarify the RFQ.
It might be great, but I haven't studied.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Kenlaw?
And Mayor, and I think you hit the nail on it. It was my understanding was the industrial because of our employees not having the proper training or understanding and dealing with industrial. I was on council with the mayor, as well as Councilman Dusset at the time. I think Councilman Lewis came in later. But, you know, my thing is this, that landfill was in a red for a very long time, and we, the manager, came up with a plan to get it out, running the water, and all that good stuff, having a stationary unit out there. That's the vision that we had as a council back then. And to hear you guys coming there, I think your presentation was awesome. But I do too feel that we can probably, you know, taking it from red into the black area right now, gray area, it benefits the city of Port Arthur, you know, at this time to, and to have someone to come in and to show us bigger and better things. I'm okay with that. But I think as a council, we probably would need to kind of look a little bit more into what we can do with that landfill. It's enterprise fund. It makes money. We all know that. And that's our goal as council members, to always benefit the city of Port Arthur at all times. Not companies, I know you businessmen, but our job is to protect the citizens and the city interests at all time and all costs. So that's all I wanted to say, Mayor, but I think the presentation was awesome.
Yeah, thank you guys for the presentation. I have one more light here. Councilmember Frank?
Yes. I just wanted to remind the council, because we're talking about, and I agree with what you're saying from that particular standpoint, but I want to remind the council that the landfill was in the red.
Oh, I was here.
When I first got here, we put in a weight scale, and we don't even utilize, we wound up not even utilizing the weight scale, because we were losing money when we were doing it. The only reason that the landfill even has gone into the black was because of free dirt. Remember that.
Oh, that's...
It's not because, not because we did anything so wonderful or upgraded, but we went into the, we went into the red because we started getting free dirt from the LNG projects. And we didn't have to pay for dirt anymore. That's when we went into the red. So it's not that we've done anything to make the landfill profitable. And when that dirt goes, the landfill will lose its profitability again. So it is important for us to get to the point to do something that is going to produce industrial resources and money for the city. The...
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm finished.
You're finished? And thank you, Councilmember Frank, for that. I don't, I really don't, the dirt helped us, and so we're making the money, and it's going to the city. I really would, and you think about industrial waste, that's something we don't handle. That's what it was clearly identified for. But then you're going to bring on the industrial portion of that by utilizing the dollars from the black that we're in already. And so, the black that we're in currently, no matter how we got there, we're in the black. And so, using those dollars to then fund the industrial part of that...
That's not...
Would be something for, because it's not coming on board. The industrial part would not come on board until 12 to 18 months later.
No, that's not correct.
When I saw the video, that's what it said, the industrial part. Am I wrong about that?
What the proposal, if I might, ma'am?
For sure.
What the proposal is, is re-permitting the landfill. The current landfill will get another designation of permitting that will allow industrial waste to come on immediately, right after that permit is passed. So, we're talking about taking our current landfill, they're talking about taking the current...
The current landfill, right.
By re-permitting and putting...
I understand. I get you now.
Oh, okay.
But, but, but I'm still, the money we're making, I just believe that it ought to stay with the city of Port Arthur and should be contracted out.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Just one second. Give me one second. I have one more light, and I want to recognize it. Councilmember Lewis?
Let him go ahead and comment.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that I didn't misconstrue anything, or anybody saw something different on the presentation. We're not asking the city for any money.
Oh, no, I know that. No.
What I'm saying is, the presentation that we have moving forward, when you look at the first 12 to 18 months, everything we're fighting for there from an engineering standpoint, the time is being driven, how long it takes to get the permitting, which, you know, Harold's Company and him will be working forward to get. But the biggest takeaway that we have to look at with this is perception. There's a reason why all these major companies have not used Port Arthur landfill. And again, just to reiterate where I was, I have 30 years' experience, specifically 10 in this market, and they don't use you because of the quality and condition of the landfill. I mean, I even know that as a small independent company coming up here, I think the biggest challenge that everybody had is maintenance in their trucks and being stuck in nails-in tires and weights and time logs. I mean, there's 100 reasons why they would use somebody else, over and above the fact that the competitors that are out on the street right now, when you guys go out and drive around, you do not have, I think, let me just correct this, you have one small operating company in this area who operates just outside Port Arthur. Everybody else in this town is using Waste Management Republic.
Well, we appreciate your analysis, and thank you for, I mean, I really do appreciate what you're saying, but I still think that privatizing it is not something we should do with the landfill itself, but the portion of what you're, the industrial portion that was out for RFQ, if you would stick to that area and tell us how that could work, I mean, that would be...
You know, it's hard to establish and build a... You know, it's hard to establish and build a premier landfill that's state-of-the-art when you can't even manage the, you know, mingle the two trash streams together. You don't have to have stuff itself for...
Well, we would have to rebid the whole, we would have to redo the entire, am I right, city manager? We'd have to rebid it out to have the right specs. And right now, from what we understand, it was just one area that we bid, and so we would have to go back and redo that RFQ and rebid the whole thing. That was not the intent of that RFQ. So I think that that would have to go back. I'll take, Councilmember Dusset?
I understand everything, but this is nothing but a presentation, okay? They're presenting something to us. And we talking about the landfill being in the black. Yes, the landfill is in the black, but there's also a cost that we experience every time we do budget. We got to buy bulldozers, we got to buy things. So there's a cost that we putting out that what we actually have in may not be a plus that we see, okay? So a lot of cities are taking a look at contracting things out. I don't think we should be just closed-minded to it. I think it's a presentation, I think they need to bring us something. If they could see whereby we can retain our monies that we're making from the landfill and not have the responsibility of all the other stuff, and it's still ours, I think that's what, that's what we need to look at. And this is a presentation. I would be glad to know, because at the end of the day, that's what I was going to be interested in when they come back, is how much money we going to make. That's all I'm interested in. If we could make money that we're making, and we don't have to deal with the headache of buying equipment, getting the people and all that stuff, I mean, it goes away. And that's what cities are doing, but it's something we have to get all our facts before we can make a decision.
Well, we appreciate your presentation. City manager?
Let me suggest this. I think, having heard what the council has said, I think we need to set up a workshop to do that as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's good.
And before the month is up.
Sounds good.
Well, we go over next week, though.
Okay.
The first week in November?
Yeah.
And we ask them to come back, first week in November. And what we will do, because we have not, although we have received a bid for them, from them, I think we need to go into detail with the RFQ, and we lay it all out to the council, so that council looks at it in depth and makes a decision, you know, as to whether we want to continue to be in the landfill business, or, you know, what are the options available, and most importantly, what are the revenue streams?
Right, okay. Sounds great. Let's do that. Thank you, guys, for your presentation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, we have, I'm going to, at this time, council, we're going to not go to number three, I'm going to call up, because she's traveling.